Good evening, everyone. It is 6:30. Welcome to Oviedo City Council chambers. We have four members who are here. Would you please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
...
And please join me in a moment of silence. Thank you. Well, it is 6:31 now. Called this meeting of City Council to order. We have four members of council here. Deputy Mayor Bob Pollak is not able to be with us this evening. First up on the agenda, we've got a state legislative recap from State House Rep David Smith.
Well, thank you very much. It's a pleasure to be with you. And again, for the essence of time, I won't do you a blow-by-blow on the legislative session, but I would like to hit some of the high points and then also talk a little bit more specific of the funding requests that we worked for the city of Oviedo through this legislative session. Yeah, I tell you, it was a good, a good session. We got quite a bit done, both policy-wise, but let me just start off also with the budget. $112 billion state budget, the largest in the history of Florida, mostly because our economy was open even throughout COVID, that we're generating that sales tax revenue, which gave us the opportunity to make some investments in Florida's future. And I'll just hit a couple of highlights on that. But in particular, just to talk about the budget, we now also have more money in state reserves in our three budget stabilization funds or our savings account for the state of Florida. We have more money in savings for Florida than in the history of the state. We've put more money into transportation, about $11 billion, roads and bridges and those kind of things. That's the single largest investment Florida's ever made in what we all know as transportation networks or roads and bridges and those kind of things. Also in education, there's more money per pupil going into K-12 education today than in the history of the state. One of the things that I've advocated for since I've been in my four years is teacher pay raises. So we add in an additional $250 million in teacher pay raises. Half of that is split for new teachers to get us up to that $47,500 starting new teacher pay. That was a campaign promise of Governor DeSantis a couple of years ago. So now we are at that point. So then what I'm hoping the new normal is, is that we don't start a new school year with thousands of vacancies, which has been Florida's past practice, because people would graduate UCF with an elementary education degree, and they could go to Georgia for $14,000 a year more. So we've now closed that gap and are now at the 47.5. But what we also created was compression. So a two-year teacher and a 10-year teacher don't make that much difference. So now we're adding and we're getting to the veteran teachers. So over the last three years, $800 million in teacher pay raises. And that's salary. That's not bonus money. So this counts towards their retirement. That's the other thing. Florida's retirement system, FRS, fully funded. Matter of fact, I think it's a little overfunded, which is a good place to be. So we're happy to have that. A lot of things going right in Florida. We made significant investments, not only in K-12 education, but in our university system, which is really ranked the top in the nation. But it was money targeted specifically for UCF, an additional $20 million in operational costs. So no construction, this isn't new buildings, but it's being able to offer the classes so people can graduate on their timeline and bringing in the professors that we need to teach education to get those skilled workforce. We, over the past couple of years, have overhauled our trades, our state colleges. We're able to get money for there. I mean, I did get money for Seminole State this year. Matter of fact, I was 22 for 29 of my appropriation requests. Two of those were for City of Oviedo on our pond, Stormwater Pond, and also the Trail Connector. So now we've just got to get those through. We've got to avoid the governor's veto pen, which in an election year, I'm hoping the red ink doesn't flow, and I'm continuing to work with the governor's office. But investments in education, both in K-12 and also in our university systems. We did some things policy-wise that I think were good for Florida. We passed an additional elections integrity bill. So more people can vote than ever in the state of Florida, whether it's vote by mail, early voting, and on Election Day. But they only get to vote once, and we passed some additional measures to ensure elections integrity. There were several things done for nursing home care and care for elderly that I think were good policy. And a lot of these things were little tweaks, but the cumulative effect is going to be taking care of elder care is an issue that I'm passionate about. One of the other things that we also did really was to implement statewide issues. We're really spending more money on our environment. Again, you know, I often steal the line from County Commissioner Lee Constantine that people don't move to Florida, people don't come to visit Florida because we have great strip malls. But taking care of our wildlife, taking care of our waterways and our green space is critical to Florida. Not only it's the right thing to do, it's good for Florida businesses, especially with our tourism base. So more money going into protecting our environment than in the history of the state. And we'll see that ripple throughout not only Seminole County but Oviedo, because there is now pools of money, $326 million, that Oviedo can tap into from the state level with matching money if there are issues that Oviedo wants to tackle. So there are continued, we created these pots of money that municipalities and counties can draw from, and some of them are grants also. Again, arts and culture, $64 million, the most money in the history of the state going into arts and culture. Because you know, coming out of COVID, we deserve it and being open to have more opportunities for people to get out. So we made some historic investments in education, in the environment. Probably the most impactful business decision we made was to extend the COVID liability protections from these frivolous lawsuits. So you can't just be sued and say, "I got COVID in your store or in your restaurant." Now you actually have to prove it. So I think that's going to keep Florida's economy open, and we're going to be able to continue to make some investments. Because with the pin-up demand for travel and to Florida, even though you might see interest rates rising and the maybe global economy starting to slow, Florida's open for business, and it's only getting better. In the last Revenue Estimating Committee for the month, we blew through the estimate by $637 million. So Florida's open for business. We're going to stay open for business. And Florida, I think we're positioned quite well going forward. And I'm probably over my time. I'd be happy to answer any specific questions. But I'll keep hooking and jabbing on our two projects to make sure we get those across the finish line.
Thank you so much for helping those happen in the first place, because they do matter to all of Florida, even though they happen to be here in Oviedo. So, thank you. Appreciate you.
No, we appreciate everything you do for us.
And happy to help. Anything else that comes up, let's work. It's a team sport.
Thanks, thanks a lot. Appreciate the comments on the economy. I think that's really good news. I remember days when we weren't in such good shape. So it's good to have something in the bank in case we have a bad day.
Well, we did, we did add an additional $500 million. It's kind of an emergency fund for the governor to use if there's another pandemic or some issue that he doesn't have to go to the legislature, he doesn't have to jump through any hoops. He can get immediate help to counties or municipalities. We also added a billion dollars, because we've all seen the price of gas, and we know inflation is back. And so we created a billion-dollar inflation fund. It's the state levels contract. You don't want to have to renegotiate those when we're out of money or prices go in. So I think we're doing some fiscally sound management. And boy, it's a lot more fun when you have money to spend than the years, than the Great Recession, where you'd have to go back into special session and cut the budget. But money is not Florida's problem. How we spend it is what we need to be working on.
Good deal. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next up on the agenda, we've got Haggerty High School's cheerleading team. So council, join me down here. All right. Ooh, this microphone's really great. Tonight, we are honoring the Haggerty High School cheerleading, the large, humbling team for winning the 2022 state championship. I see Coach Geddes here. If you want to come on down, give us a rundown of all that they've accomplished this year. Appreciate it.
All right. Good evening, everyone. I would like to also say thank you to all of you for creating a community that we are all proud of. This is the end of my 31st year. My entire career's been spent in this town, whether it is at one high school or the other. Our task this evening is to honor our state champions. Our first group is coached by, excuse me, coached by Terry King. She is also a business owner here in the city as well. Coach King has been with our program for six years. She has also continued our legacy in cheerleading, whether it is in the 2A large or 2A medium. We have finished first or second every year for the last decade. So I'm going to turn it over to Coach King to introduce our student athletes.
Thank you. First up, we have one of our captains, Emma Johnson, Macy Wilder, Jenna Martin, Kenzie Perkins, Ava Kaplan, Peyton Wickizer, Atasia Ferrer, Kendall Jensen, Delaney Geiger, Charlotte Swineheart, and Lily Garzone.
All right, congratulations, ladies. Our next individual is out of our girls' weightlifting program. The FHSAA added an Olympic lift to their repertoire this year. They added the snatch. The scenario is traditional, which is bench and clean and jerk. And then another division, which is the snatch lift, which is entirely different. So that then will eventually become just a two-combinations scenario for the state. This is the first year they offered that state championship. My head coach is David Addaway. Coach Addaway also is a business owner in the community as well. I'll let him introduce our snatch state champion.
All right. Haley is a four-year athlete on our team. She started every year. She does a little more than everyone else does. She practices all year round. She goes to a gym privately and works out. She's dedicated herself. And I told her she could set a state record if she wins, because it's the first year, and she did, and she won in excellent fashion. So Haley files.
Record set, state record set here at Haggerty High. Congratulations, Haley. All right, our last presentation for the evening ceremony item is to honor Helpful Hands, who has been so generous over the years in supporting the Rock Scholarship. So whoever's best suited to speak on this, I'm thinking it might be Regina Bearzwell, who happens to be a former council member.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Tonight, we have the privilege of donating to one of our first community partners, the Rock Scholarship. But before I do that, I'd like to introduce our board members and ask them to come up. We have two new board members. One is Brad Augustine, and the second one is Chris Chuck. We have, excuse me, one of our vice presidents, been with us a very long time, Susan Haynes. And last, but certainly not least, our president, Josh Trizoco. So we just want to say thank you, and we're going to turn this over to Josh.
All right. Just a few things to say here. It's now the Drew B., the Drew Boweare Rock Scholarship. We have enjoyed working with Drew over the years, and now we're looking forward to working with you. Now, don't lose that check, okay, the actual check, because Drew has actually lost the check before. So don't pull a Drew. So over the past 12 years, we've donated over $100,000 to the Rock Scholarship Fund, and we're hoping to donate a lot more over the next 10. So more than double that. That would be the plan. So we also, not that it's really about the scholarship here, but we also donate to the City Police Department Summer Camp and have for about seven or eight years now, when Officer Duffy came to us to ask if we could help her out as well. So we're happy to do it, and we're happy to continue our partnership.
So while they're leaving, Regina came up to me earlier and asked if I wanted to play in their golf tournament at Islesworth, and it's only $3,700 to force them. But that's a little rich for me, but they do have another event called Evening Under the Stars. That's usually a lot of fun. And not such a hit to the wallet, but it's a great event. So if anyone is interested in those, they can get ahold of Regina or one of the board members and have at it.
And then a good portion of that comes right back here to Oviedo. Great organization. So thank you, Helpful Hands. I don't know if you guys can hear us out in the hall now, but we really do appreciate all you guys do for Oviedo. All right, next up, we have the approval of the minutes for March 7, 2022. What's the pleasure of council?
Madam Mayor, I'd like to make a proposal to approve the minutes.
Well, I'll second it then.
All right, we have a new pattern since we're missing our main motion maker. All right, we've got a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, they are approved. At this time, anybody from the public that would like to speak is welcome too. I don't have any written requests. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to share anything? All right, with that, we'll close public comments and move on to the consent agenda. What's the pleasure of council?
Madam Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second. All right, we've got a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, and that is now approved. We've got no public hearings, and we do have a first reading of ordinance. So for the ordinance, Mr. Hall, if you could read it by title only.
Absolutely, Madam Mayor. Ordinance number 1722, an ordinance of the City of Oviedo, Florida, relating to economic development, providing for a referendum election and ballot language for an election scheduled for November 8, 2022, relating to an economic development ad valorem tax exemption pursuant to Section 196.11995 Florida statutes, providing for implementing administrative actions, providing for conflicts, severability, codification, and the correction of scrivener's errors and an effective date.
Thank you. Mr. Cobb, if you could get us up to speed.
Thank you, Mayor. This is an ordinance that schedules a public hearing, a public referendum for the purpose of renewing the city's economic development ad valorem exemption program. Back in 2012, the city put forth a program to the public, and there was a referendum, and the program was adopted. Section 196.11995 of Florida statutes allows the city to create such programs, but they only have a lifespan of 10 years. And the only way that you can renew it is to conduct another referendum. So what this ordinance does, it calls for a referendum to renew the city's economic tax, economic development ad valorem tax exemption program for another 10 years is what it does. Tonight, we're asking that the city council schedule a public hearing for ordinance number 1722 for May 16, 2022.
All right, what's the pleasure of council? Oh, wait, no, we need to do a public hearing or do public comments, I think, right?
I have to, but you can.
Well, let's do it. Is there anybody who'd like to address council on this matter? All right, since there's not, what is the pleasure of council?
Madam Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Let's set the...
Am I setting a public hearing?
You're setting a public hearing. So I'll entertain a motion to, oh, let me scroll down.
I'd like to make a motion to schedule a public hearing on May 16.
Is that adequate? Okay, perfect. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, got a motion and a second. All those in favor of scheduling a public hearing on May 16 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right. Oh, do we have any discussion? I guess I forgot to ask that part, too. I think we already discussed this, and everybody seems of one mind.
You had a work session.
We did, we did. I don't want to skip over any parts if people have thoughts on stuff, though. My iPad is thoroughly frozen over here a little, so give me a second, see if I can unfreeze it here. Okay, next up, we have resolutions. Mr. Hall, you do not need to read this by title only, but Mr. Cobb, if you could please.
Yes, ma'am.
Get us up to speed.
If you remember back a few meetings ago, you adopted a, you approved an agreement for the, it was a land swap agreement for the connector road that will go between Geneva Drive and Stairway 434. Part of that, part of that agreement involved property that the city owns where the former post office was located. When the city bought the post office in 2012, we had, there were a couple of agreements that were done between the city and Evans Groves. And one of them was a donation agreement. And that donation agreement, through that agreement, the Evans Groves donated $200,000 of transportation impact fee credits that they had, that they had earned. They gave back to the city those $200,000 in credits as part of this agreement. If the city, and what the agreement said was that it placed certain conditions on the property and the city's use of the property. There was a list of uses that the city had to do in order for the donation to be, to be in full effect. The donation agreement had a lifespan of 2042. And so when the city decided to build the roadway that connects Geneva Drive to Stairway 434, and with the demolition of the post office, the, it was, we had to terminate the donation agreement. So what this agreement does is it terminates the donation agreement, reinstates the transportation impact fee credits. It allows the Evans Groves to use the credits on any property that they own, as well as to transfer the credits to any property that is located within the city's CRA and the city's Seminole Economic Enhancement District. It's called SEED. It's a nice name for Brownfield area, which is mostly the CRA plus the mall area. And it, 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 once again, these credits can be used toward transportation impact fees. Tonight, it's recommended that the city council adopt Resolution Number 4210-22.
All right, is there anybody from the audience wishing to speak? Or if you have something as the developers representative to get us up to speed, that's even better.
My name is David Assel, Assel River State, 1757 West Worldwood Street, Suite 1, in Oviedo. Here representing the...
Hold on a second. We've got a mic issue.
I forgot my issue.
Say it all again. Okay. Dave Axel.
Axel Real Estate, 1757 West Broadway Street, Suite 1, Oviedo, Florida. Here representing the property owner this evening. I agree with the staff recommendation and ask for your support of this, and I'm here to answer any questions anyone on the council may have. Thank you.
All right. Is there anybody else from the audience wishing to address council at this time? With that, we'll close public comments. What's the pleasure of council?
Madam Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve resolution number 4210-22.
Second.
All right. We've got a motion and a second. Any thoughts?
Well, man, this, we've talked about this before, and this makes sense.
To me, it seemed like a good idea when we, when we did it. I would have preferred to see that area be a senior center, but things have changed. And as long as we have a senior center or community center, whatever you want to call it, on the radar, high on the list of priorities, then I think we can, we can go forward and achieve that goal.
Yeah. No comments.
I'm wondering, from a legal perspective, if a road designed to be a festival road and serve a park does not perhaps live up to the expectations, or the, maybe not the expectations, but the four corners of the document that triggered the giving up of the credits in the first place. Is that something where there may be any flexibility, Mr. Hall?
Well, the agreement, obviously, was a bilateral agreement between the parties. And if the parties were to agree to amend that, there is amendment, there is provision built in that parties could agree to amend it. Yes, the parties could discuss that and agree to amend if they wish.
Is that something that anybody up here would be interested in attempting to have a further discussion about with the landowner? Because it does appear, something about this just rubs me a little bit strangely, because it does appear that we have essentially procured the post office with taxpayer money, and at this point, 100% taxpayer money, to then knock it down on the taxpayer's dime and build a road to benefit the people who now don't like that the road is there because they wish it were a senior center. But if we didn't knock it down, we couldn't have built them a road. So there's something about the public purpose and the intent of the road, it seems to me like we may be able to have a discussion and find a way to not do what's proposed tonight. Is there any interest in that at all from, from any of my colleagues up here?
I guess I wasn't here when we did the initial alignment agreement, but from my understanding is if we didn't put a senior center there, these credits go back. Is that correct?
Or a park, or something of that nature. So it's something to benefit, it's something that makes the owner, the person who gave the credits, happy, and it serves the public, because now we have a festival road that, when there's not a festival, serves the owner who gave the impact fee credits. But when it's closed for a festival, then I think does live up to what the rules of the arrangement were. I think, I just think it merits a little bit more, more discussion and more time, maybe a little legal review, if there's consensus to do that.
I'm looking into it more, but I don't know if it's just me.
Well, I want to believe that that question's been asked either by Mr. Cobb or Mr. Hall. And maybe, Brian, you can give us some insight as to what the conversations were, whether it was a negotiated conversation, and we are getting something out of this, or, or not? Or was it just a one-way deal?
No, it was, it was negotiated. This is what it says. The donation agreement says permitted use. And it says shall mean uses consistent with those of a community center servicing the residents of the city to provide social, recreational, cultural, and educational, including a home as a home for a museum for the Oviedo Historical Society, that's in parentheses. Services which are not operated for profit and for which membership may be restricted to persons living in the city. By way of clarification, permitted uses shall include social, cultural, and educational activities and recreational activities for teams and individuals or which provide non-organized leisure play, such as board or card games, but excluding specifically gambling activities, homeless shelters, soup kitchens, drug or alcohol treatment facilities, governmental administration buildings. And then there's another parentheses that says not excluding administrative uses related to the permitted use, police stations, fire stations, and any services routinely provided by city administration, utility, fire, or police departments. Notwithstanding foregoing, the city and Evans may agree to additional permitted uses. There's, what we looked at was, was that the roadway, the mayor's got a new take on that. We did not discuss that the roadway would be part of a recreational or a cultural or social use. We looked at the roadway as an infrastructure improvement. And so that was, when we looked at it, we looked at it from that standpoint, that we were not going forward with a recreational facility on the property, is what we looked at. And so that was when we decided that we needed to terminate the donation agreement. And with, and with the termination of the donation agreement, the credits would go back.
All right. Do we, do we have consensus to talk about it more? I get the feeling we've got two people who are interested in it, two who aren't.
It is infrastructure. You know, I, you know, I don't want to beat the dead horse, but I'm not sure what it would get us to go back and discuss it, whether, you know. We can't, we can't put the building back up, I guess. I guess all we could do is not build the road and put a building there where the road's going to go.
I think the question is, can we agree that the road will serve a cultural purpose? And I think the answer to that is absolutely, because this, this group consensus was it should be wider than what I thought would, would be necessary to be just basic functional, you know, a basic functional road. It also includes parking, and the parking benefits the landowner, who now is hoping to get these credits back as well. So it benefits the landowner in every way. It benefits the park, because presumably the entire, because Ms. Tugert spoke up, all of those spots there benefit the park. So all of that is part of a recreational facility, you know, as I see it. So I think that we have created a road that can be closed to have really great cultural opportunities. We created spaces to allow people to visit a park. So I think there is an argument to be made that even though it has this new format, it's something that is still serving the purpose for which it was, for which the donation was made. All right. Well, I guess at that, with this, we've got, got to take a vote. So all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
All right. So what, what do we do when we have a tie? We wait until Mr. Pollak is back?
If the resolution doesn't pass.
Okay. It does not pass. All right. And my computer fell asleep again here. All right. We have no discussion items. And city manager's report.
I have no report, Mayor.
All right. City attorney's report.
Same thing. City Attorney's Office doesn't have a report tonight.
All right. Councilmember Tugert.
This past Saturday, the OCIA had their adopter road cleanup out of Line B Tinsley Way, so that, that was pretty good. We also made our way all the way down around East Franklin Street. Good event. A lot of people showed up. And then I guess the only thing, this Saturday, we have Bacon Bourbon and Blues, so that should be a good time. That's all I have today.
All right. My report's up next. Wanted to throw out there an idea that I talked with Chief Coleman about. It sounds like it might not go anywhere, but there appears to be some challenges in the Live Oak Reserve neighborhood on Red Ash with people dropping off kids at Pardon. So if there is a way that the city could let the neighbors know the extent to which they can exercise dominion over that street and try to solve their own problem, I very much appreciate it. Because it sounds like neighbors are not getting along, and there's a desire by some to have law enforcement get involved, and it would be better just to make sure that the parameters are known. So if that discussion hasn't happened yet, and it might already have, appreciate it. All right. Thank you. And this Saturday, I'm going to miss Bacon Bourbon and Blues, because I'm going to the Oviedo High School NJ ROTC Ball and their keynote speaker. So if you have any words of wisdom, please pass them my way. And that's all I've got for today.
Well, we on Friday had the Relay for Life Tournament, which was a great outing. It was sold out. It's always probably, I think, one of the best events that we have with here in the city. It was a great turnout by the community, and I think it does a very good job. I don't know if we actually know how much money we actually raised.
My understanding, I don't know the dollar amount, but it's more than we've ever raised before.
It was close to 50, I think, was.
I'm not sure.
You're not, you're not holding on to that?
I, I...
You guys had some questionable scoring, too.
They, they, they did not give me a dollar number. They just said it's more than we've ever raised before.
I heard it was probably close to 50. So it was a great job, great job by Parks and Rec as well organizing that event. We also had the tree giveaway this Saturday here at City Hall, 8:30 to 11:00. Two trees for every resident. And then, of course, the Bacon Bourbon and Blues, which is a great event. And I believe we have Greg Allman's son, David Allman, who will be playing. So that's a real treat and a great job by Parks and Rec for being able to do that. I will comment on the thing about Live Oak. I do know they're trying to get it on the homeowners' meeting to talk about that. And then I believe it's up to the homeowners to decide whether or not to close that gate or keep it open. So that's my understanding of that. I know that, I know the police have been out there, and Chief Coleman's been out there to talk to residents out there as well. And it's just an ongoing issue going on. So I do know they get the homeowners, they're bringing it up on their next meeting. And that's all I got.
All right. Mr. Britton.
Okay. I'm going to piggyback on the Relay for Life, and they, they did give me a number before I left the other day, just short of $50,000. Be, and be kind of nice if we could make up, I think it's like $400 to make up the difference. So I'll have to get with Terry. It'd be nice if maybe the council can chip in and, and get us over the top. And I want to mention one of the sponsors, SES Group is, was a $5,000 sponsor, and it's a, they're a bunch of guys out of Knoxville, Tennessee. And I didn't know this, but out of the goodness of, of Mr. Ed Pacelli's heart, he, he paid the $5,000, came down, because he's a golf addict, and came down and spent probably another $1,000 in the, in the different fundraiser activities with mulligans and free shots and all that. So that's the, to me, is really cool. I've had a relationship with that company for a couple of years now, and I actually work for them part-time, and, and they are very community-oriented, very family-oriented. They're part of a larger company called Bristol Bay Native Corporation. That's an Alaska native company. So I wanted to give a shout-out to Mr. Pacelli and SES Group for, for supporting. They've always bought a, bought a foursome, but this year, they went over the, over the top for us, and that, that was much appreciated. We talked about Arbor Day. Getting back to Mr. Smith's comments about compression with the teachers, I think we're having the same issue. I think we're a little bit further behind than the state, but just to let everyone know that it's going on all over. We need to raise salaries. We need to be competitive, and then we need to address the compression that it causes. We're no different than anyone else, but, so we have to solve those problems and make those decisions to, to make that come about. And finally, Mr. Williamson, Brian gave me some photographs of Oviedo on the park and some of the landscaping issues along the lake. I believe he's going to get with us and talk about his concerns. I, I don't know whether it's a stormwater management issue or Parks and Rec's landscaping issue. So I'd appreciate it if you could follow up with Mr. Williamson and, and take care of that. And that is all I have.
All right. Before we officially end reports, this week is City Clerk, Municipal Clerk Appreciation Week. So council wanted to share these with our fabulous clerks. Passes down. And that one's for Elian Rivera. This one's for Ms. Madeline Orth over here. We've got one for Annie Madison. So if you ever come in and you are looking for public records, these are the three wonderful humans who will help you have all the transparency you desire. And if you're closing on a house and you need to get a lien search to, to say that you're okay and your bill's paid up, this is who helps you. And they also make the magic happen with the videos and get everything online so we can just seamlessly access it and serve you better. So these are, these are the people who are working behind the scenes, and we appreciate you guys so much. So thank you for all you do. Let's give them a round of applause. Now, we really do have a great team here at City Hall, and our top to bottom, all around. Really appreciate you guys. All right. Now we've got the upcoming meetings.
Madam Mayor, one, one more thing. I forgot to bring this up, but I want to have Chief tell us again about Bobby Dreon and his competition on his motorcycle. I thought that was a great note you sent us today. So he placed fifth out of how many? Seventy?
Yeah, I think it was seventy.
And it was first in team. He was on the team that did first.
Two different events.
Two different events. So, man, the guy's just an outstanding role model for our city as, as an officer of our, our police department. So just wanted to call that out. So that was great. Thanks for sharing that, you know, and you get the opportunity to understand Police Foundation, we're able to help, you know, fund them to get down there. So that was great.
All right. Anything else for, for the good of the order? All right. Then on Monday, May 16, 2021, at 5:30, we've got a CRA governing board meeting, followed by a 6:30 PM regular session. Monday, May 23, a work session. And is it also a special meeting?
It's a special meeting.
Okay. It's all out, special meeting. And for anybody following on the audience or online, that's when we're going to be discussing whether to fund the fire district. So this is an important one. Monday, June 6, 2022, at 6:00 PM, we have another regular session. And with that, this meeting is adjourned.